I will now call the February 4th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council meeting to order. In just a moment, I'll have you stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I will not lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. That's a correction. We have Troop 362 from St. John Lallane is going to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, boys, if you want to count and walk this way, we'll observe a moment of silence, and when I turn around and look at you, that means you can start to pledge. Got it? Don't all of you speak at one time here. Understand? All right. They nodded their heads. Let's stand and observe a moment of silence.
Everybody please hold your watch and reading.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Great job, Troop 362 from St. John Lallane. Come back and see us again, okay? All right. Want to welcome you in attendance as well as those that might watch YouTube later. The next item is the consent agenda unless there are items to be pulled, accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We're going to have three public hearings, and then we're going to have two presentations. So first, public hearing is on the rezoning of 309 Southwest 18th Terrace.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 12, 2019, applications with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinance as by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4631 approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Matt, on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a request to rezone property located at 309 Southwest 18th Street Terrace from T3 Suburban to SF7 Single Family Residential. On the subject property covers approximately 0.09 acres and is currently in the downtown zoning district. The property was recently subdivided and added to the lot to the south, which is outside of the downtown zoning district. The applicant is building a new single-family house on the lot and plans to construct a detached garage over the zoning district line. Rather than have two sets of development requirements for the property, the applicant would like to rezone a smaller portion to match the larger part of the lot that contains the house. Staff does believe that the request meets all the review criteria for rezoning. Since being adopted in 2007, this is the first request to rezone out of the downtown zoning district, which is generally discouraged. However, staff does not believe that this sets a precedent as it's a landlocked property and is being developed in conjunction with a developable lot outside of the downtown zoning district. And the downtown review board reviewed the request and recommends approval. The planning commission held a public hearing last Monday and also recommend approval, and staff also recommends approval of the rezoning request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of council from Matt. Seeing none, thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you like to come be sworn in and make any comments? Okay, we'll go straight to the public. Is there anyone who would just like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. It would like to introduce Bill Number 4631.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4631, an ordinance rezoning property from T3 Suburban to SF7 Single Family Residential.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill Number 4631, an ordinance rezoning property from T3 Suburban to SF7 Single Family Residential.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4790.
Next, we have a public hearing to rezone 715 Southwest 7 Highway.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 12, 2019, application with attachments of 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinance as by reference, and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference, and Bill Number 4632 approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Matt, on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a request to rezone property located at 715 Southwest 7 Highway from GB General Business to RC Regional Commercial. The subject property covers approximately 2.94 acres and is an undeveloped property located west of 7 Highway between the 40 and 7 QuickTrip and the railroad overpass. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to develop the site as a residential warehouse storage use in the future. The property was rezoned from light industrial to general business in 1988, but has remained undeveloped over the past 30 years. The previous zoning district would have permitted the residential storage use by right. Comprehensive plan does define the property as corridor reinvestment, and the specific plan classifies the area as mixed-use general. Both land use designations are generally reserved for areas around the periphery of neighborhood centers, which include larger retail destinations such as grocery stores and other retail centers. In this case, the location does lie around the periphery of three major retail centers at the corners of 40 and 7 highways. Proposed land use and zoning district is appropriate adjacent to the area as the property is not prime for retail use and other higher-traffic land uses due to the limited access along 7 Highway. The RC Regional Commercial Zoning District is intended to accommodate commercial land uses that serve community and regional needs and is appropriate adjacent to major highways, including 7 and 40. There's already been a precedent set for regional commercial zoning in certain areas along 40 Highway, including the recent request rezoning for Title Wave on the west side of QuickTrip. The site is also bordered by light industrial zoning district to the west, and there are other areas of light industrial adjacent to the railroad. This would be the first regional commercial zoning district with frontage on 7 Highway. However, this property is unique in its access limitations, which are limited through the QuickTrip site with an access easement. Due to limitations, it would be difficult to develop the property with a larger traffic generating land use typical of general business zoning districts, which would include retail, restaurants, or offices, as well as private restrictions that QuickTrip has placed on the property. A service use that requires limited customer interaction is ideal for the subject property as traffic generation is minimal. The applicant did provide some preliminary site plans and building elevations in the packet with the rezoning to give an idea of the size and design of the potential development, which would include a three-story, 99,000-square-foot storage facility with 739 units. If the rezoning is approved, a conditional use permit, site plan, design review, and final plat must be approved prior to construction. The planning commission did hold a public hearing last Monday and recommended approval of rezoning, and staff also recommends approval of rezoning, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Counting card.
Matt, did I hear you correctly? The only access will be through the QuickTrip property? There won't be access from 7 Highway?
That's correct. So, the access will be through 7 Highway through QuickTrip. Due to the grade change, there's no, there won't be any access from the frontage.
So you'll have to enter the QuickTrip property to get to the storage facility?
Correct. And there's already an access easement that was put in place when QuickTrip was developed for that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Kayler?
Mr. Wright, just for, just to make sure, there is no entrance coming off of 10th Street or any available entrance to come off of 10th Street through the Fink area?
Yeah, there is not any access from 10th Street. The only access would be from 7 Highway, and then there may also be if QuickTrip grants an access easement from 40 Highway through their access by Title Wave. But their main access, their only guaranteed access is through 7 Highway.
Okay. Councilman Levisay?
So based on that, have we had any comment from QuickTrip? I mean, obviously, it's their property, so I'm assuming they're okay with it, but I imagine these are box trucks and people with trailers who are going to be going through the parking lot on a regular basis. Have any comment from them at all?
We have not, and I'll let the applicant, he may be able to answer more about that. Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Matt. So is a applicant present? Would you like to come be sworn in and make any comments? As a matter of fact, answer questions.
If somebody's worried about giving space in the street, something like that?
I do.
Good evening, council. Ron Cowger, AGC Engineers, 405 South Leonard, Liberty, Missouri, here on behalf of Verdade Real Estate. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We really don't have a presentation. The Verdade folks apologizes for not being here tonight. They unfortunately have to get on an airplane to come to these meetings, so they sent me instead. I'm a little more local. To answer a couple of the questions that I heard, there will be no other access to, no direct access to 7 or to 40 other than through the QuickTrip piece of property. QuickTrip has actually signed an affidavit saying that they're okay with this rezoning going forward with their piece of property. I'm not sure if that, that piece of, if that piece made it into your packets or not, but happy to answer any questions that you may have about this project. On behalf of Verdade, they're very excited to come. They've actually done another project here within the city of Blue Springs. They did the Hardee's down the street on 7 Highway, so they're excited to come back.
Any questions from the council? Did he answer everything you need to know? Councilman Kayler?
Yes, sir. I have a little bit of concern just brought in here. Page 155, 156 are totally different layouts than page 148. 148 is actually the correct layout of the land with the QuickTrip with the canopy. Is there a reason, do you know if there's a reason why they didn't take the page 148, which is the correct plot plan or site plan for that location? Because they've interjected with the, some other pages here where they show a corner of the flowerama that was there prior to, and it's kind of misleading, and I would suggest that if coming back, you might be a little more focal on one layout compared to two or three.
I can appreciate that. I don't believe there's two or three, but I do believe there are two with the flowerama, and if you go to that exhibit, Mr. Wright?
Oh, there's two. Correct, but there's a third one with a QuickTrip without the canopy, and the 148 is the correct one with the canopy on it.
So that was the, that was the property that the, so this is the rezoning application. We're working our way through the site plan.
Right, and I understand, I understand it.
These were used for the pre-application meeting, and we decided to go ahead and forward those to you folks so that you'd have an opportunity to see what was going on. The, there's also a Google Earth image, and that's just a function of Google Earth, but we could get a drone up and take a picture of the, of the site and bring that back whenever we come and ask for site plan approval.
Well, and the only reason I'm even considering this or even saying this is because you had page 148 was a correct plan where it could have been a layover on it. So that's the only reason I, you know, for the future, just hopefully that when you come back, everything will be, because it's kind of hard to look at that one 3D where you see a flowerama from the corner of the 40 and 7 Highway, which is totally not even there anymore, and then you have two different other plot plans, and then you come up with, but the page 148 is the correct one, and I was just, just curious for the future.
Yes, the QuickTrip obviously exists with the canopy. The aerial, the perspective drawing was something that the, the marketing team had put together, and unfortunately, that's a function of Google Earth. They, they are able to utilize Google Earth, and Google Earth is not updated in the 3D perspective. So, so that's the only reason for that. No intent to mislead.
Yeah, and the staff will work with the applicant to clean it up before it comes back to us next time.
Correct.
And just, just for the record, Mayor, I did talk to Matt and Tom in reference to that.
Okay. Good deal. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, we're going to go to the public. Is there anyone who would just like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill 4632?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4632, an ordinance rezoning property from GB General Business to RC Regional Commercial.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill Number 4632, an ordinance rezoning property from GB General Business to RC Regional Commercial.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4791.
Next, we have a public hearing on a TIF and Economic Development Update. Ms. Christine Gates.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit.
Oh, that's right. I'm jumping again.
I tried to get in there before she could talk. We have the following exhibit to enter into the record. Notice a public hearing is published in the examiner on January 12, January 19, January 26, and February 2, 2019, and TIF and Economic Development Update presentation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Now, you're up.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is the sixth annual update of the tax increment financing projects and other economic development projects within the city, including the South Area Neighborhood Improvement District and the Land Bank of Blue Springs. The guidance for the requirement of this public hearing is Section 99.965 of the Missouri Revised Statutes. These updates ensure compliance with state statutes that require an update every five years for each TIF district. By providing an annual update, we will meet this requirement and also provide more frequent updates on the status of TIFs and other development projects. The annual TIF report is available on the city's website and is due to the Department of Revenue each year on November 15, and the format that we use is the one that's required by the state, and we handed out copies to each of you this evening. Several additional reports are prepared on an annual basis that include information about the city's TIF projects and other incentive programs. These reports include the TIF Annual Report, the Adams Farm Update Report, the NID Bond Report, the MCRC Annual Report, and the TIF One Page Summary. After this meeting, I will send out one email to the mayor and council that includes all of these reports. In addition to the annual reports, the notes to the audited financial statements include information about the tax abatements that have been approved by the city. The results of the audit for fiscal year 2018 will be presented at the March 4th City Council meeting. The next two slides include maps of the economic incentive districts within the city. They include TIFs, 353 Redevelopment Corporations, TDDs, and CIDs, and Chapter 100 Bonds. These maps are available for viewing on the city's website. In addition to these maps, there are maps on the city's website that show the different sales taxes throughout the The changes from last year's maps include the addition of the Forcia Chapter 100 Bonds, the Sunset Plaza CID District, and the removal of the Meyer Lab Chapter 100 Bonds that were paid off this past year. In March 2018, the city issued Industrial Revenue Chapter 100 Bonds in an amount not to exceed $36 million to provide a tax abatement to Forcia Interior Systems for acquiring, constructing, and installing approximately 262,000-square-foot automobile component manufacturing facility, including building, structure improvements, and fixtures on the project site. The project site and associated project improvements will be giving 100% tax abatement for 10 years and 50% tax abatement for the next five years on the real property for this project. In addition, the city also issued Chapter 100 Bonds in an amount not to exceed $33 million to provide tax abatement to Forcia for the purpose of furnishing and equipping the project improvements with furnishings, equipment, electronics, and other related personal property. This bond issue also received tax abatement for 10 years at 100% tax exemption and then five years at 50% exemption. The total projected value of the abatement on the personal properties, $3.5 million through the life of the bonds, and on the real property tax abatement, the estimate is $8.9 million through the term of the bonds. This project is estimated to increase approximately, or to create approximately 300 jobs. This is not, the Walnut Street Partners Chapter 100 Bonds is not a new project, but we've left this slide in to provide an update. Exceligent closed in December 2017, and the abatement that was approved on this project runs through 2022. The city has been working with the property owner to find a new use for this property with the intent to leave the abatement in place if a new tenant is found. This is a new slide that we've included this year that includes a listing of the city's current and expired Chapter 100 Bond projects. In addition to Forcia and Walnut Street Partners, the only other active Chapter 100 Bond project we have is for Kohl's Distribution Center that was approved in 2017. There were no new Chapter 353 tax abatement projects approved in 2018. An existing 353 Redevelopment Corporation Target Time Defense closed in September 2018, and it is our understanding that a new tenant is looking at that property as well. This slide of Chapter 353 Redevelopment Corporations is another new slide that includes a listing of the city's current and expired Chapter 353 Redevelopment Projects. There are currently six active 353 projects and four whose terms have expired. This slide includes all the active TIF districts within the city. The debt percent reimbursed column has been updated. This now includes the interest costs for pay-as-you-go TIFs as well as for the bond costs. So the percentages that are included in the column debt percent reimbursed is the total, including debt service on these project costs. In the past, the interest was only calculated when there were bond issues. The Fall Creek Loan for the Fall Creek TIF is anticipated to be paid off in April 2019. This will end the TIF, and only a CID will remain at this location. The Highway 7 and 40 Project C, which is Hy-Vee, is also anticipated to be fully reimbursed in fiscal year 2019, at which time the TIF Eats and Pilots may distribute it to projects A and B to help pay them off faster. Two project areas in the Woods Chapel TIF expired this year because they were not activated within 10 years of the adoption of the TIF plan. City staff worked with the developer on the timeline and advised him a new plan or revised plan would need to be approved to develop those, those areas with TIF in the future. The Adams Farm TIF plan includes a half percent Walmart TDD and a half percent Home Depot TDD sales tax for 10 years. Those taxes went into effect in August 2009 and will expire this year on July 31, 2019. The Fall Creek CID was amended this year to change from special assessments to a 1% sales tax for 20 years to facilitate the renovation of the existing multi-tenant inline-retail building, demolition of the structure that was the former Golden Corral Restaurant, and tenant improvements to accommodate a movie theater tenant. The total project cost is estimated $8.7 million. CID reimbursable cost is $740,000. Since approval, the developer received notification from the proposed tenant the project would not move forward. The developer and the city are in discussions about a revised plan at the site. The Sunset Plaza CID was established this year and represents the first standalone CID in the city. The CID was formed to provide reimbursement for blight remediation, cost to demolish a portion of the existing building to enhance traffic flow, repair the existing buildings, and make site improvements. It includes a 1% sales tax for 20 years. Total project costs are $5.6 million, of which $1.9 million is CID reimbursable. The project is almost completed, but the sales tax has not yet been put into place. There are three projects that we are currently working on, including the North Price Chopper CID, the Jones Place MCRC Project, and the Blue River Family Dental MCRC Project. Now, we'll move on to the South Area NID. The 2018 assessments were added to 936 parcels as compared to 633 parcels in the first year of assessments in 2009. As of September 30, 2018, the only remaining unpaid assessments totals $13,179. This amount is separate from the $2.9 million unpaid from properties that have been transferred to the land bank. There are currently a total of 1,084 parcels, including exempt parcels, which is an increase of 274 parcels from last year. This resulted from seven parcel splits, including new residential development in the NID, including Colonial Highlands Eagles Ridge Villas, Eagles Ridge Estates, Estates at Chapman Farms, and the Villas at Chapman Farms. In the current year, the NID bonds were refunded, resulting in an estimated net present interest cost savings of $1.5 million. This savings helps offset the $2.9 million in uncollected assessments on the property that has been transferred to the land bank. This is a map of the NID area as of September 30, 2018. The parcels in red on this map are owned by the land bank. On October 2, 2018, parcels 6 and 7 on this map were sold to Larkin Properties. The Land Bank of Blue Springs was established in 2013. There are currently 41 properties in the land bank, and 11 of those are available for sale. The remainder are side lots and remnants. Since 2013, the land bank has deeded seven properties to the city and sold nine properties. This concludes my comments for the 2018 update, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Guess you did a great job. No questions. Thank you. Next, we have introduction, oh, we've got a public hearing. Well, I'm trying to get done here tonight, aren't I? Okay, is there anyone who would just like to speak in support of this? In support? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next, we'll go to introduction and reading of Bill Number 4633.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4633, an ordinance approving final plat for Gardens at Colonial Highlands, first plat, a replat of a portion of Lot 3 Timothy Lutheran Church, lots 1 through 30, and tracks A through E. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed to the second.
Got the second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, no.
Roll call.
Trying to revert back to the way we used to do things and sort of the, roll, roll call, please.
Old school, didn't you?
Yes. It was old school.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
I'm ready to go back to the old way.
Second reading of Bill Number 4633, an ordinance approving final plat for Gardens at Colonial Highlands, first plat, a replat of a portion of Lot 3 Timothy Lutheran Church, lots 1 through 30, and tracks A through E.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4792.
Next, we have a presentation, Buy Blue Springs. Trisada's going to take care of that.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to present today an update on the Buy Blue Springs and Discover Blue Springs program. Through the programs I'm presenting are not new to most of the council. I like to do a few refreshers and maybe inform anybody in the room that is not familiar with our programs. The goals of each of our programs for Buy Blue Springs and Discover Blue Springs are to bring money to the Blue Springs area. Primarily for Buy Blue Springs, we are talking about residents, and for Discover Blue Springs, the visitors that come to our community. You'll notice that a lot of our events that we talk about within our programs here tonight are similar, if not the same, from past years because they've been working, and we think we should not reinvent the wheel. I should change my PowerPoint. I can use the arrow. Thank you. Discover Blue Springs. As I mentioned, with Discover Blue Springs, our target market is to our visitors. This image here reminds us that the benefits of bringing folks to Blue Springs is about them spending money with us, which increases our taxes and encourages historic preservation, a cycle that benefits us all, and we would like to see continue. I'm all backwards. I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Hackyels, as a sample that's up there, is a sample of a coupon that we send out in support of Discover Blue Springs. Area events that we support, such as the Wood Bat Tournament, the Kansas City Metro Softball Tournament, the Knights of Columbus Golf Tournament, the All-Star Football Game, they all come in and ask for representation of our Blue Springs city and what we offer. We came up with a program like this so that they can scan the QR code and see all of the benefits and discounts that the local businesses in Blue Springs provide. We also have several family reunions that come through and want goodies from Blue Springs. One of my favorites is the Smith family, who brought in 500 people throughout the area and around the U.S. Buy Blue Springs. As I mentioned before, we will cross over in some areas, and this is a reminder that the money that is spent locally benefits the residents in our area. If you spend $100 in Blue Springs, 68 stays locally and goes back to our taxes. If you spend $100 in Blue Springs, 68 stays locally and goes back to our taxes. If you go to a chain store, only 43 of those dollars go back to our area. Of course, this creates jobs, generates payroll, it encourages entrepreneurship opportunity, and generates pride and enthusiasm through our local residents. One of my favorite buy local signs is the one that says, "Buy here to send my daughter to dance class," or "Buy from the corporation to send the CEO on another vacation." That's why we pity the fool who doesn't shop local.
Best slide of the presentation.
In the area, or this year, we also paired up with the school district, as we have done with the past, and we worked with JAG TV and kind of approached our local market on a different level. We set within the high schools, we created these ads that would focus towards them and their love of texting. So this commercial was used, as you can see, to focus on the, look at the big picture and shop local, people speaking about what they can do for the evening and how they can keep their monies in Blue Springs. We also paired up with 10:30 AM and did some local radio ads. In the past, you might be familiar with our Meet Me for Lunch that we've done with the Chamber where we cash mob one of our local restaurants. Well, new, in 2018, we kicked off Buy Blue Springs field trips. This is an opportunity for us to take visitors to local businesses to create awareness, to give opportunity to connect, and to see behind the scenes. One of my favorite visits was to Lunar Bowl, where we visited behind the scenes in the lanes and found out that to be a technician, to work on the alleys in the Lunar Bowl, you have to be a little, you have to have little hands and be thinner. You cannot be a bigger person because you can't get in and work on the mechanics that need to be done. So I thought that was a challenge that none of us are aware of in most cases unless you went on the field trip. We also visited Jess Hansen Golf Academy, Target Time, Genevieve's, and Kohl's, to mention a few. We participated in Global Entrepreneurship again this year. Global Entrepreneurship is a week that takes place in November. It connects our local entrepreneurs. The Metrowide Global Entrepreneurship Week touches about 15,000 people in our Kansas City area. The events that Blue Springs involved in was the Power Hour and, of course, the ever-famous Wine Etiquette Class, which sold out two years in a row. Can't go wrong with that. Little Blue was out and about in 2018. She had a facelift, did a little botox, so we had her done. If anybody is available to participate in Be Little Blue, we're always looking for volunteers. And then, once again this year, it's our fifth year to do Receipt Rewards. Receipt Rewards runs through November 1 through December 10, and the advertising goes in the city water bill. It goes on Facebook, and then we did flyer drops at the local businesses. We encourage people to spend money from all areas in the metro here in Blue Springs. They turn their receipts into the Chamber and have an opportunity to win $500 in gift cards, which they hope to return here to Blue Springs. Our winner this year was a local resident. She was happy that she had extra money for Christmas. So if you have no further questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Laura Vermillion to finish up.
Welcome, Ms. Vermillion.
Thanks, Trish. On behalf of the Chamber, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for your support of both the Buy Blue Springs and the Discover Blue Springs program. Since 2010, the city has provided $5,000 each year for the Chamber to use in the marketing of these programs. We've done this in two-year contracts, the last expiring in 2018, and if I understand it correctly, Christine is working on preparing the paperwork for another contract for two years. When that comes before you, we respectfully ask for your consideration to renew that contract. Again, if there's any questions about either program, we can take them now.
Councilman Culpepper?
Yes, Your Honor. First off, I want to congratulate the Chamber on the award, is Chamber of the Year. That is really a great, great accomplishment. Lots of competition out there for the members of the Chamber, and I know you've all worked very hard. I love your advertisement. Buy Blue Springs is very near and dear to my heart, as it is to everyone who sits up here. So we really appreciate all the efforts and kudos on great accomplishments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Laura and Trish, did you let the recipient or the winner of the $500 this year know that the mayor was very disappointed that they were not available to receive my call when I drew their name?
It's married.
Good. So that's worth anybody else that's going to win it. Receive my call.
It was more exciting when they answered the phone last year.
Well, yeah, last year, they recognized my voice before I could try to trick them. But anyway, thank you so much for what you do and continue to make Blue Springs a city on the move and on the right track. And for those that's in the listening audience, Buy Blue Springs. The multiplier is significant.
Please introduce our leadership class for the 2018-19 year. We want you to get to know these people because we think these are the future leaders of Blue Springs. The Leadership Blue Springs program was established in 1991, and the reason was to develop a community leadership pool for Blue Springs. To build good community leaders, we give them information about our community. We start in August and run through May, and then the class will graduate in June. They hear about city, county, state government, education, the business community, economic development, fire and EMS services, and those are just a few of the items they hear about. Not only do they attend class, but they're also responsible for a community project. And we want to thank several of you for attending their project this weekend, which was to build 40 beds for a not-for-profit organization called Sleep in Heavenly Peace. What I'd like to do is have first the committee chairman introduce themselves to you, and then the class behind that, and then I'll let Cheryl direct them for the picture that I believe we're going to take. So, committee chairman first.
Glenn Nash.
Jamie Russell.
Lisa LaCoen.
Carmen Booker.
Jerry Willingham.
Okay, class members, I'll have you come to the microphone and then list your name and introduce yourself, please, with your business.
Good evening, Jay Greco of Farmers Insurance here in Blue Springs. Come up here.
Hello, Lindsay Schreiman, Community America Credit Union.
Hi, I'm Melissa King with Farmers Insurance.
Trish Tada, Chamber staff.
Julia Porter, City of Blue Springs.
Miranda Osterman, City of Blue Springs.
Hi, Aaron Sauer, Central Bank of Midwest.
Laura Bolin with Blue Ridge Bank and Trust.
Rebecca Knapper with Edward Jones.
Kyle Flowers, Police Department.
I'm Jill Gunlock, and I'm with the Blue Springs School District.
Brian Alexander, Blue Springs Police Dispatch.
I'm Stephanie Oxley with C Proz Inc. with custom software and IT services.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Abt Riley, Marketing.
Sophie Mermelstein, Blue Springs High School Student Body President.
Courtney Cook, President at Blue Springs South High School.
We certainly want to congratulate all of you going through this class, and one of the things they probably didn't tell you is you have to attend council meetings for the rest of the year.
Okay, we're probably going to have to have you get in a little bit closer to each other here. Whoops. Whose camera is this? Otherwise, we're going to be right in the middle. Let's go. There we go. Right there. I was falling. I'll see y'all later. Have you all made the third row? Yeah. We're all here. Back to stand on toes. Almost, but we got the podium in the way, so maybe I'll come over here. All right, so I'm hoping we're good to go here. All right, go ahead.
All right, again, congratulations, and I appreciate you going through that so you can learn a little bit more about what the city does and how you might become a part of it. And we're always looking for people to volunteer for abortion commissions, so you can go to the city website. Hopefully, they were told that already, and so we want to keep you actively involved to keep the city on the move.
Your Honor, if I may, I went Saturday along with Mr. Carter and Mr. Kayler and watched the production of these beds. I was so impressed. It was like an assembly line. It was so well organized, and I can't imagine a better project than building beds for kids so they don't have to sleep on the floor. I was so, so impressed with all of you, and thank you for doing that project.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the next presentation. We have a presentation from the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board with their annual report, Ms. Cynthia Sable. And I know you have a number of members. Where's the best spot to put her? Right there? Or you want to do it in the middle?
Middle.
In the middle, you're front and center. Yes. And then you can introduce other members of the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board that's present. I see a number of smiling faces back there.
There are. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge other members of the Public Safety Board. We have Natalie Belgrin back there, and Cindy Hood, and then Chris Levisay is our liaison. Okay, and Chief, of course. Can't forget him. This is my first one, a little nervous, seeing as though we were the last ones to present today, too. But we meet on the fourth Tuesday of every month, and we met every month except for December, and that Christmas fell on that same day. So this year, what the board has recommended, we've recommended the Hotel Motel tier program. We did the video surveillance ordinance that the Crime Prevention Unit is working with businesses to get them in accordance with that ordinance. We did the tobacco vape ordinance as well. Livestock, Chris brought to us, the livestock and farm animal classification, and I believe that poultry was added to that. Parking in front of residential mailboxes was also something that we discussed. We filled one position for a training coordinator that comes out of the funding, and then two part-time dispatchers, which started in December and January of this year. We have purchased, or we're in the process of implementing, the record management system, which began in 2017, and hopefully it'll be completed in 2019. And this fiscal year, with the PSST funds, will also purchase approximately $200,000 in equipment, a new animal control truck, night vision glasses for the task team, and a robot as well. We had our public forum, our annual public forum, that was conducted by the Chief of Police and Deputy, Deputy, Deputy Chief Edwards. That was in November, and that was on the state of our police department. And we had, as of last, oh, 1/30, we had 2,974 times that that was viewed online, and that was for anybody who stopped for longer than three seconds. So we were happy with that. We've had visitors that came to the board. We had the citizens living over on Valley View came and discussed their concerns about the speed limit along that road. Councilman Kayler came and thanked us for the Hotel Motel. We appreciated that. And the board members have been invited and attended the 17th Annual Awards Ceremony held in December. We were present for the HRC's annual forum as well in November. We've attended penning of the badge ceremonies for Deputy Chief Edwards in October. Captain Rapp and Lieutenant Sergeant, Sergeant Keating and Sergeant Brotherton all have, we've attended their penning ceremonies. That concludes my report for 2018, and if you have any questions, Chief will answer them.
Is there any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Kayler?
I just, being Mayor, you appointed me on this committee when I first, and I just want to say, these people put in a just enormous amount of time of helping the law and overseeing that, and I just want to commend them for me, that thanks for keeping up the good work. You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
And I think every member of the council, except Councilman Culpepper, has served as a liaison on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, so she'll probably be coming next. Okay, I'm not letting a kid out of the bag on what I'm planning to do, but anyway. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, members. Now, when she called her names, they didn't wave or stand up, but stand up. There are two members there. Okay, that brings us to Merrill announcements. The 18th, which would typically be the next council meeting, is present today, so city offices will be closed, so we'll be meeting on that Tuesday, the 19th. Class, you hear that? So you know when to come? Okay. All right. That's going to bring me down to Thauster Punda. Every February is recognized as Black History Month, and I always have quotes from notable people, most cases that have gone on before us. And tonight is going to come from W.E.B. Du Bois. And I quote, "The cost of liberty is less than the price of repression," end quote. I don't have anything else to come before the council. I don't have any visitors' appearance forms, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We adjourn.